Hi, good evening. I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting closed session. The time is now 5:42. City Clerk Duarte, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometta?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz is excused. Councilmember Trujillo is excused. Mayor Protem Pemberton?
Present.
And Mayor Sosa.
Present. Do we have any public speakers?
We don't have any public speakers or written public comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Ordered by the mayor. The city council will now recess to closed session under the following authorities. Government Code 54956.95. Liability claim. Claimant Interinsurance Exchange of the Automobile Club. Claim number 24079. Agency claim against City of Downey. We will now recess to closed session. The time is now 5:43.
Good evening. I will now reconvene the regular city council meeting, closed session. City Attorney Funk, will you please report at the closed session action?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. In tonight's closed session, the city council addressed all items agendized. There was no reportable action from tonight's proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Funk. Before we begin the regular city council meeting, open session, I would like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the city clerk. If he did not obtain a number and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room and city staff will issue you a number card. Lining up during public comment will not be permitted and each speaker should remain in their seat until their number is called. The time clock will begin when you begin your comments. Per the city's council meeting rules and for fire safety regulations, all persons shall remain seated unless addressing the city council or entering or leaving the chambers. Standing in the aisles or along the walls is prohibited. There is overflow seating available in the lobby. If there are no available seats in the chambers, please proceed to sit in the lobby. I will now call to order the regular city council meeting, open session. Time is now 6:33. City Clerk Duarte, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometa?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz is excused. Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pemberton?
Present.
And Mayor Sosa.
Present. Thank you. Please rise and join and welcome Pastor Tania Lopez from the Downey Memorial Church for our invocation this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Let us pray together. Oremos. God of peace, of love, and of infinite wisdom. We come before you in gratitude and in one spirit of unity. We thank you for the blessing of being gathered here tonight. There has been so much happening in our communities and across our state, so much that feels at times out of our control. But we thank you for being our anchor and our strength and above all our hope. As we prepare for tonight's meeting, we ask that you still our minds if they are overwhelmed and that you comfort our hearts and our spirits. overwhelmed, and that you comfort our hearts and our spirits. We thank you for each person that is here tonight. Thank you for the dedication to service by each member on the council and their staff. Thank you for the members of our community who engage in the work of creating a vibrant and welcoming city for all. We ask that your spirit guide the discussions and the work that is shared this evening. We ask that you help us to hold space for one another as we continue to lead and to serve each other. We know it takes many hearts and many hands to serve our neighbors, and so we thank you too for the network of partnerships and collaborations that are made up of businesses and nonprofit leaders, organizations, volunteers, educators, first responders, communities of faith, and above all, engaged residents of all ages. Strengthen our relationships to one another as we continue to work together. With so much attention on our state at this time, help us to show the world who Californians really are. Keep us tethered to one another, and help us as we each do our part to safeguard our cities, to invest in our future, and to foster a better tomorrow for all those who call Downey their home. In your precious son, Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Tania Lopez. Now, let's welcome Boy Scout Pack 805 for the flagpole.
stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the name of His Christ.
Thank you, boys. Let's hear it for Boy Scout Pack 805.[754.82][754.82](Applause) Please be seated. Now is the time for city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference and meeting reports. I will start to my right, and that'll be Mayor Proton Dorothy Pemberton.
Thank you, Mayor Sosa. I don't want to clean up everyone's list, but I welcome everyone to our council meeting. And I'd like to start off by saying what is the month of June? June 6th was D-Day, when Allied forces stormed the beach in France during World War II, and it brought together the land, air, and sea forces of the Allied armies in what became known as the largest amphibious invasion in military history. And someone's confirming. Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Juneteenth is also known as Freedom Day. It is observed on the anniversary of June 19th, 1865, when slavery ended in the United States. June is also Pride Month. And LA Cada will be hosting a festival in August in downtown Downey like we've had last year. This month is also the 250th birthday of the Army, which we will be acknowledging in just a bit. In attending events, I had attended Dr. John Garcia's retirement party, Superintendent of DUSD, along with my colleague here, Mayor Sosa. So for the past 12 years, he has spearheaded the incredible growth of our schools and the programs that they offer. His vision enabled many programs that are now implemented, and we have so many distinguished schools. And that's one of the reasons people like to come to Downey to live, because of our great school district. I also attended the grand opening of Western State's carpenters training facility in Carson, and this is a 70,000-square-foot warehouse, or rather campus. They offer training and certification for many trades in the construction industry. It's a state-of-the-art facility, and we certainly are in need of skilled laborers in the construction industry, and especially with building needed homes and commercial structures, but also to help build back neighborhoods like those that were devastated by the fires. So Western State's carpenters represents over 90,000 union carpenters, and they look forward, working with their labors to have a living wage. And there's also a Whittier facility to train those looking for a career in construction. So if you're looking for that, look into them. We also have Keep Downey Beautiful, we had this month, a litter, it's a litter cleanup group, and they go out on Saturdays at 9:00 a.m., and it's just for one hour. The Downey Court always attends. We thank them for participating. They met at Big Lots just last Saturday, but they will be dark in the summer. But if you know of a location that they can schedule for their monthly Saturday cleanups in the future, starting, I believe, in September, please call the Public Works Office, 562-904-7102. I have a few thank-yous. I'd like to thank staff on. Guatemala now has speed hump signage, identified speed humps, and a new stop sign at Glen Cliff. So thank you to our Public Works Director, their staff, Mr. Norris, the time all involved to get the residents involved. The residents are very appreciative that we, the city, try to make improvements to keep our streets safe. It was a big cut-through coming from the west side to the paramount on the 5 freeway. All of us on council will continue in working to help slow down traffic because of bad drivers. And yes, there's still plenty of areas to address. All of us, I know, have a list of where we are trying to control the speeding. Last week, we met for a three-hour session and listened to the presentation for the '25-'26 budget. A tremendous amount of work has gone in and thought into this detailed report. So thank you, City Manager Bradley, Assistant Manager DeRojas, and also all the department heads that gave the presentation. We agree that taking a conservative approach to next year's budget is the correct way in lieu of the uncertainty of the economy. I received an email, I just wanted to say, from a resident of another city applauding all that Downey has done for this year, '25-'26. And it's due to our very capable and proactive city manager, Mr. Bradley, along with our staff, always trying to find the best way financially to have an event. We have with us a speaker. We're going to hear a presentation. Thank you, David, for attending today and presenting your program on behalf of the LA County Vector Control. That's our mosquito board, and I'm your mosquito rep. We all need to start implementing best practices to prevent mosquitoes from breeding this summer. I have a few save the dates. So now until June 28th, though, we have a lot of young people in here, until June 28th, SEACA has adoptions. What year is it? 2025? So for $20.25, you can adopt a pet. There's still time to get your grad a lifelong friend, or maybe you are now an empty nester. Nothing beats a four-legged friend, and they will listen to you. So if you'd like to call and look into that, call SEACA at 562-803-3301, or visit seaca.org, S-E-A-A-C-A, for an online catalog of animals to adopt. And this is how we clear the shelters. You can help clear the shelters by saying yes to a, I call them fur babies. June 11th tomorrow is the Downey Chamber of Commerce Annual Golf Tournament at Rio Hondo. Maybe some of you will be involved in that. But June 18th, next Wednesday, we are going to start our Concerts in the Park. When you receive a magazine, The Orbit, they have the schedule of concerts in the park, and it's going to be at Furman Park. Come at 6 o'clock to get your seat, then buy your dinner or dessert with the Rosefloat Association, and then at 7:00 p.m., enjoy electric vinyl. This is a rock tribute, but there's all different genres here for the next seven weeks. So check what's coming up every Wednesday for seven weeks, 7:00 p.m., Furman Park. June 28th, Saturday, the Chamber will be hosting its second annual firecracker festival from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Downey Avenue. We look forward to that. The Chamber did a really great job last year with the first. Looking ahead, we have, well, I'm going to save that. I have some other council members here. On construction in my area, on District 3, construction on Old River School Road by the Rio Hondo Golf Course, that is the Furman Park Recycled Water Main Extension and Irrigation System Improvement. So what is that? We are retrofitting Furman Park's landscape irrigation system from potable water, which is drinking water, to recycled water. And this will conserve our potable water, should you want to, it should be completed, rather, in August. So please drive slowly. There's a lot of construction in the area in different days. And also, Downey Avenue will be getting paved, I believe it's next week, in between Firestone and Fifth. We're working on Downey Avenue now to get that street paved. We've done a great job with our different measures. And that will conclude my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Pemberton. I think you covered it all, all right?
No, there's a few things.
Oh, okay, all right. Next up, we have Councilmember Mario Trujillo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Happy Pride Month, everyone, and thank you to the Downey City Council for giving permission for LA Cada to hold the annual Pride Festival. As you know, as a member of the community, it's very important for me, as a member of the council charged with public safety, that we look at areas where we can assist individuals who may be in crisis. Unlike the heterosexual community, our community still struggles with bullying of our kids in schools. Straight kids don't get bullied in schools. Gay kids do. We still struggle with kids getting kicked out of their homes by their own parents. Straight kids don't get kicked out of their homes by their parents because they're straight. Gay kids do. We struggle with suicide rates. 41% of LGBT youth, 41% kids may consider suicide tonight because they're gay. And the straight community certainly doesn't have to deal with homicides. Straight people don't get killed because they're straight. Gay people do. It is a marginalized community, so I want to thank the city of Downey for being accepting. They've always been very accepting of me and my family. We've had great neighbors. I raised my kids here. So it really means a lot to me that this council would allow this nonprofit to have this event, which is very family-oriented. We're always cautious in Downey. We're conservative in Downey. We don't subscribe to things that go on in big cities. I grew up in San Francisco, California. When I found Downey in 1990, I found home. I've been here for 35 years. I got married here. I have my kids here. I'll probably die here. I love this city. We are living through difficult times, but I want you to know that you have a united council who really focuses on your public safety. The mayor made an announcement. I made an announcement on social media about the fact that we are aware that the federal government, who has a job to do, okay, the feds have a job to do, they have a department that's in charge with looking for undocumented individuals, particularly dangerous, okay, criminals who have been convicted, who are here in this country illegally, and I think we all agree they should not be here and should be deported. I don't even think you need a conviction. If you pose a safety, if you pose a risk, if you pose a danger to any member of public, you should be deported if you're not in this country illegally. I think we all agree with that. There are some issues right now in the community as to how ICE is carrying out their operations. Look, we're the city of Downey. This is a nonpartisan body. We're tasked with your public safety, and we do that primarily by having one of the best police departments and fire departments that we have in the county of LA. We are a united council when it comes to your public safety. You may not like the fact that our police department cannot assist or cooperate in federal operations. You may not like that, but that's the law. We put out a statement to let you know what the law is, but I want to assure you that this council remains committed to the notion that our police department is always ready, always ready to protect you, your families, and your property. So if you see, if you see something, say something. That has to do with your public safety, absolutely. You need to call the police and bring it to our attention so that we can continue to protect you, because that's what we are tasked to do. So I want to thank this council for remaining united. I'm so glad we don't live in a big city. Looters, vandalizers, and anyone that assaults any member of law enforcement will be arrested and will be prosecuted. I'm going to repeat that one more time. Looters, vandalizers, and anyone that assaults any member of law enforcement in this city will be arrested and will be prosecuted. That is unacceptable. My heart goes out to the Undocumented Worker Committee, but we are a city of law and order, and we will follow the laws, okay? I am suffering the impacts, like many people. Let me start with the basics. It's hard to get a car washed. Expect to wait longer, especially in Mexican restaurants. You're going to feel impacts. Our country is going through something, and I'm just asking that we continue to be good neighbors to each other. Let's continue to be the example for surrounding cities and other areas of what a united, accepting community looks like. That's all I'm asking for. Let's get to the business of keeping you safe. This is not about partisan politics, okay? This is not about what the feds and the states want to do. We're here with an agenda, a short agenda. I'm hoping that we're out of here by 8:30, but I did want to make that statement and thank this council, because even though we may disagree politically on many things, we agree on one thing. Well, a lot of things, 95% of the time, and that's keeping you safe. So I do mean that. Thank you, and let's get to the business of keeping you safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trujillo? No, Councilmember Frometta?
Thank you, Mayor Sosa. Good evening, everybody. It is a pleasure to see all of you here tonight. I will try to keep my comments short. I know we have presentations to get to. I want to welcome you, those that are here with us this evening, and those that are watching us via YouTube. I say engaged communities are strong communities, and I do agree with Councilmember Trujillo that now is the time for measured leadership across the board, and we are in a nonpartisan body here at local, in this local government. And it is important to remain united and know that loss will be enforced, and fanning the flames of violence and division doesn't accomplish anything. And we want to ensure our residents that we are working together to keep you safe, and we have a police department that will continue to do just that. And on that note, I want to, once again, welcome you and tell you I did attend a couple of events. One of the things that was mentioned by our MPT a little earlier was the budget workshop we had last week. And this is one of the reasons Downey, as a city, continues to be a light, in a lighthouse in this region, because we are measured with our approach to spending, because we value our taxpayers' dollars, and we really look at what needs to be tackled and spent. We're not perfect, but yet for the 12th year in a row, the city of Downey will have a balanced budget. Again, thank you to our city manager, and thank you to our Assistant City Manager, Vania DeRojas, and all of the department directors for presenting us during a three-hour budget workshop, all of the various departments, and how we are going to be voting on that budget coming up. I also want to let our residents know that we continue to monitor very closely transient activity throughout various shopping strips and shopping malls. And I know that many of you have emailed us, have called us, with some concerns about transients sleeping right outside some stores, and I know that I've had conversations with our city manager, and those are being addressed. We want to make sure that our community feels safe and that we are also moving individuals to the help that they need. We are not going to allow for camping and sleeping on sidewalks, and we will continue to uphold our city ordinances when it comes to anti-camping. Also, regarding bulky items, I think before this meeting began, you might have seen some announcements on the screen, and that is, in order for us to keep, again, a clean city, we realize people do a lot of spring cleaning, people move, and we want to, or I want to, remind folks, for bulky item pickup, you need to schedule a call prior to, prior to putting your items out on the sidewalk. And the number is 562-904-7102. It is important, as I drive throughout It is important, as I drive throughout our city, northwest, east, south, I find, and we find, and we communicate with one another alongside sidewalks, mattresses and old TVs or old furniture, and we are aware, and we need to work together. It is our city, and we need to keep it clean. At the same time, I do also want to remind our residents that parking their cars on their lawns is not allowed, and if we see that, you will be cited. Same with, I still see some Christmas lights hung in some properties around our city. And listen, I don't want to be nitpicking, but it takes all of us working together. We all care about our city, from public safety to clean sidewalks to maintaining our property values. And so these are the little things sometimes. If you see, I'm not asking you to tell on your neighbor, but we do want to make sure that we are maintaining our neighborhoods clean. And with that, I know I've also had conversations with our Director of Community Development, Irma Witron, who also oversees code enforcement, and we will continue to go around our city. I want to make sure that also our strip malls, if you've noticed, some of our strip malls have gotten a facelift, and that is very intentional. We want to make sure that property management companies, that those that own those strip malls are maintaining them with nice paint, nice signage. And you probably have seen Lakewood and Florence or other areas throughout our city. We want to make sure that all, there is uniformity throughout our strip malls, whether it's North Downey, South Downey, West Downey, and that their landscaping, whether it's a gas station landscaping or a bank landscaping, that those landscaping areas are also well-maintained, and it takes all of us to make sure that those things are done. I know that it was mentioned about mosquito season, and I know we're going to have a presentation. Once again, in the last council meeting, we talked about vacant properties, and we had a discussion as a council on vacant or abandoned properties throughout our city. We are also taking a look at that. We need to make sure that we protect one another. Mosquito season is around the corner, and after a heavy rainfall season, there will be mosquitoes coming. If you're like us, you know, those ankle biters are fast and furious in a few weeks. So we want to make sure if you have standing water, whether you have a swimming pool or your neighbor that goes out of town for a month and has a hot tub, whatever it is, we want to make sure that we don't have standing water that can be the perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes and can spread disease and illness. I also want to say thank you for the new stop sign that was installed in District Four and that was on Matic in Gain Ford. That, again, we all are talking the same, yes, the same language. We see with the proliferation of cars and increase in individuals driving in our communities, we've been here for the past almost 30 years, and we have seen speeders, you know, more than double, triple everywhere, in residential streets and big avenues. And I've got to tell you, this council drives around the city, and we want to make sure that we are adhering to our laws and that those people that are speeding in small neighborhoods are also, that are also, I don't want to say cited, I don't want to be so punitive, but that we keep our neighborhoods safe because there are families that move here with small children that like to play in the front yard, and we are installing stop signs where needed. Lastly, I do want to acknowledge Mayor Sosa for his, the men's mental health awareness fair that occurred over the weekend. I know you will speak about that in just a bit, but thank you. Mental health is such an important topic for men and women, but I do want to acknowledge his desire to bring that awareness across the board and for city staff to work so hard to bring this to fruition. And lastly, I know we have, and I know it's been mentioned, but I want to say, take advantage and take opportunity with your families. Free concerts in the park begin, the Twilight Summer Concert Series at Furman Park begin next Wednesday, the 18th of June, and they will go through August 6th. And so every Wednesday, most of us, all of us, some of us, will see you there every Wednesday night, starting at 7:00 PM. You get there a little early, and you support our Downey Roseflow Association. Thank you. That will conclude my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Formetta, and thank you for those kind words. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see pretty full chambers. Thank you for being here and participating in this, just this civic, well, our civic duty and this civic process. So thank you for being here. Just in advance, Happy Father's Day to all the dads in the crowd and those that are watching. Enjoy your day. I know mothers get like a weekend or a week out of it, right? So enjoy your one day, fathers.
They could make it a weekend.
Okay.
And don't make them grill, or if you want to grill, you can grill.
Okay. As Councilmember Formetta mentioned, she did bring up the Men's Wellness Fair that took place this past Saturday, and the purpose of that fair was to bring awareness and support to men's mental health and well-being. And mental health matters just as much as physical health, and here in the city of Downey, we recognize that. So we really want to thank staff. They did an amazing job. They went the distance on this and their support, and thank you for my colleagues for being there and supporting this. We had an awesome, a couple of panels, one of them featuring a boxing champ, former boxing champ, Abner Mahrez, who lives here in Downey. That was really awesome. And we had a lot of organizations that participated and provided some tools and resources to help men and families deal with men's mental health. And I do want to really thank our staff, Vania de Rojas, Shante Duran, Judy Montenegro, Parks and Rec, and several others. I want to thank Police and Fire for being there and supporting the event. Thank you, Chief Lutner, for being there. Chief Holder-Bent, thank you for the kind words and the support from your staff. But it's just the beginning, just the inaugural Men's Wellness Fair event, and we're hoping to build on that on an annual basis. So thank you all. I do want to mention that, actually, I think my colleagues covered all the events, so thank you, especially Dorothy. But I will keep my comments short, so that concludes my comments.
Did we mention Dodger Night?
Oh, thanks, Mayor. No.
Mr. Mayor?
No comments from staff.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Dees asked me to bring up string lights on commercial businesses.
Yes.
He wants to discuss that. Is there a second for that?
I think that's already on part of the future item, no?
We have something a little different. I think it's the color of the lights, the shade and the brightness that was on there.
Oh, oh, oh.
A little different.
He's talking about.
String lights.
The string lights run business because I brought that up as far as code enforcement already.
Yeah. I think he wants to have a discussion about that.
I think the idea was, if I, the idea was to look at string lights from a code enforcement perspective and how it relates to commercial businesses. Is that correct?
Yes. Apparently, there's concerns with Shea Shack and stocks.
There's a, so I'd second that. We'll have a discussion.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about the interruption. And Dodger Night, did it sell out?
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Do we have any tickets left for the Dodger Night? It's sold out.
Sold out, okay.
Wow, okay. Glad I got my tickets. All right, thank you. City Manager Bradley.
Nothing from staff. Thank you.
Okay, great. We have five presentations tonight. I'll make my way down to the podium.
Good evening, once again. We have five presentations. I'll go ahead and start. First one, we have the Mayor's Outstanding Citizen Award. And just a reminder to everyone here in the audience and also those watching remotely, the Mayor's Outstanding Citizen Award, we've done something different this year. We've opened that up to the public, and we're asking for nominations. So if you know of anyone who stands out in the community and is doing some amazing work, I want to hear about them. So the whole idea for me is to be able to, as mayor this year, to be able to recognize people I've never even heard of that are doing some amazing work in this community. We have 114,000 residents in this community, and I know there are a lot of people doing some amazing work. So with that said, our first recipient tonight is Rudy Sloan Casanova, senior citizens volunteer, crochet and knitting club leader, who was nominated by Oscar Sisco. Okay. Yes, Rudy, come on up. So Rudy is a 65-year-old US Army veteran. It's a perfect night for you to be here, who proudly served as an NBC nuclear, biological, and chemical officer while stationed in Germany. A resident of Downey for the past five years, Rudy has become an active and valued member of the community. Two years ago, he launched a free crochet group at the Downey Senior Center, creating a welcoming space for creativity, connection, and support among local seniors. With over 30 years of involvement in the international imperial court system, Rudy has served on its board of directors and has played a pivotal role in fundraising efforts to support and uplift the community. In addition, Rudy has served on numerous 501(c)(3) nonprofit boards, dedicating his time and expertise to advancing causes that improve lives and foster unity. With that said, I present you with the city pin, and there's this Mayor's Outstanding Citizen Award. In recognition of your outstanding dedication and service to the Downey Senior Center, as a leader of the crochet and knitting club, you have generously volunteered over 285 hours, creating a welcoming and supportive space where seniors can learn new skills, share creativity, and build meaningful connections. Your commitment to enriching the lives of others through compassion and community engagement is truly commendable to the residents of Downey. Given this 10th day of June 2025, signed by me, Mayor Hector Sosa. Congratulations. Thank you. Let's take yours. No? Okay, all right. Let's do the picture then. Go left. There he is over there. Tony is a senior citizens volunteer and ballroom dance club leader. With a life marked by dedication, service, and community involvement, Tony brings a rich and diverse background to everything he does. He proudly served four years in the United States Marine Corps as an infantry machine gunner, including active duty in the Gulf War. That experience instilled in him a deep sense of discipline, resilience, and pride in serving his country. For the past 25 years, Tony has called Downey, California, his home. It's a community he has grown to love and support in many ways, especially through his work in real estate. For over 20 years, he's built a successful career helping families and individuals find their dream homes right here in Downey surrounding areas. His knowledge of the area, combined with his commitment to integrity and hard work, has earned the trust of countless clients. Outside of work, he has found joy in a unique passion, teaching ballroom and Latin dance to senior citizens. Watching others light up through movement and music has been one of the most rewarding parts of Tony's life. Whether on the dance floor or in the community, Tony strives to make meaningful connections and contribute positively wherever he can. Here's the city pin.
Thank you.
And I'll read, in recognition of your exceptional dedication and volunteer service as a leader of the ballroom dance club at the Downey Senior Center, through your energetic and engaging classes held every Monday and Wednesday, you have contributed more than 192 volunteer hours, helping seniors stay active, joyful, and connected. Your passion for dance, positive spirit, and commitment to building community have brought, what is that, vitality and happiness to countless lives in the Downey community. Given this day, 10th day of June 2025, signed by me, Mayor Hector Sosa.
Well, I'd just like to say that we talked about mental and physical health, and I discovered dance about a year and a half ago, and it's been one of the most exciting and joyful things. When you wake up, the most important beat is your heart, and that beat should continue throughout the day. It's the way we celebrate. It's the way we connect to spirit. It's the way the, you know, the ancients used to connect to something. And I just invite that you guys dance every day because at 54, I discovered dance two years ago, and it's been the greatest thing in my life. Thank you.
first one, I'll go ahead and read her bio, and then she can come up and join us. Tiffany K. Aguilar is a passionate student planning a major in psychology or sociology with the goal of creating an organization to support mental health. Great timing. She has actively participated in avid basketball, ASB, and community service, often serving as a motivator and leader among her peers. Tiffany is known for her caring and trustworthy nature, frequently offering support and advice to friends and teammates. Her involvement in Powderpuff and the Downey Pageant has strengthened her leadership skills and ability to encourage others. Inspired by her family and experiences, Tiffany is dedicated to making a positive impact on the mental health community and those around her. And please join me in welcoming Tiffany Aguilar. You're part of the Roseflow Court too, right?
Thank you, everyone, and congratulations, Tiffany. I'll try to jump over some of these paragraphs so I don't repeat some of the same ones. Tiffany Aguilar, or Madam President, as I like to call her, is an ambitious student with a clear vision for the future. She has participated in a variety of extracurricular activities, but mostly I've known her as a dedicated member of the Downey High School Avid Program, which supports students in their academic journeys. She made significant contributions by promoting school spirit and community service events such as writing letters to senior citizens and patients at St. Jude's Hospital, which is a cause that we support every year in the Avid Program. She has consistently maintained a high GPA appearing on both the dean's list and principal's list, and her recognition as Student of the Month, as well as Viking Award and our prestigious Gold Award Scholarship, which is only given to three seniors in the entire Avid Program at DHS. Evidence is this. I'm glad I was able to witness a small part of this formidable young lady's journey, and I can't wait to see how she transforms the world with her empathy, character, and determination. Congrats, Tiffany Avid Viking for life.
I would just like to thank my avid teacher, Ms. McComber, Mayor, and especially my mom for allowing me to grow and for always teaching me to be myself and help others, because we never know what anyone is going through. So I like to say, don't judge a book by its cover, and always have and lend a helping hand. Thank you.
Of course, a selfie. Okay. Next up, Downey High School avid senior, Justin Hernandez. Justin Hernandez? Okay. Okay, this is recorded, so we'll do him justice, and I'll read his bio. Okay? Justin Hernandez is a dedicated high school student passionate about communication and psychology with a goal to work in law enforcement or the justice system. He's actively participated in police explorer programs since his freshman year, developing leadership skills and practical knowledge in law enforcement. Justin completed a competitive 12-week police explorer training academy and a paid internship with the Bio Group, where he helped plan events and manage logistics. His strong communication, creativity, and leadership abilities are reflected in both his academic and extracurricular achievements. Influenced by his family and mentors, Justin is committed to motivating himself and others as he pursues his future career goals. Let's give it up to Justin Hernandez. Next up, we have Downey High School avid senior, Paulina Peña. Paulina Peña is a motivated high school student passionate about law, government, and community service. Inspired by a family member's wrongful prosecution, she aims to make a positive impact through a legal career. She balances her academic pursuits with leadership roles, including serving as president of the Junior State of America Club and active participation in debate and ASB. Paulina also works at a criminal defense law firm and volunteers regularly demonstrating a strong work ethic and dedication. Outside of school, she enjoys photography, baking, and traveling with her family. Paulina, I present you the city pin. And in recognition of your exemplary academic achievements as an avid student, reflecting your dedication to excellence and your commitment to making a meaningful impact, your achievements exemplify the highest standards of excellence and will be an inspiration to the Downey community for years to come, given this 10th day of June 2025, by myself, Mayor Hector Sosa. Congratulations.
I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Acevedo, who was your avid senior teacher this year. He could not be here, but he sent me a very nice message he wanted me to read. It's an honor to select Paulina for the Mayor's Recognition Award. She truly stands out in all the best ways. She's deeply caring, always ready to support those around her. She's incredibly responsible, and what makes her especially unique is her lighthearted spirit. She brings joy and laughter wherever she goes and makes every space brighter and embodies the kind of person we should all strive to be and absolutely deserves this recognition. Congratulations.
I would like to thank Mr. Acevedo for non-hating me for this award, and thank you to the mayor and city council, as well as my family for just supporting me always.
Okay, we have one more Downey High School avid senior, and that is Angelina Villarde. Angelina is a dedicated and hard-working student with a strong passion for science, sports, and community service. As a member of the biomedical pathway since her freshman year, she has developed a deep interest in medicine and plans to pursue a career in nursing. Outside the classroom, Angelina is a committed athlete in water polo and swim, certified lifeguard, and an enthusiastic volunteer. She takes pride in her leadership roles, community involvement, and academic achievements, all while balancing a busy schedule with determination and resilience. And, there we go. Angelina, I present you this city pin. Congratulations. And in recognition of your exemplary academic achievements as an avid student, reflecting your dedication to excellence and your commitment to making a meaningful impact, your achievements exemplify the highest standards of excellence and will be an inspiration to the Downey community for years to come, given this 10th day of June 2025, by myself, Mayor Hector Sosa. Congratulations.
I think I'm getting all my steps in today. I also have a message from Ms. Sanders, who could not be here in person. But again, this is something that she wanted me to say on her behalf. Angelina is one of the most responsible, silent, intelligent young ladies I have met. I'm fully confident she will thrive on anything she decides to do. I'm proud to have been a part of her education, and I cannot wait to see her success. She is extremely diligent, does everything ahead of time, a lifeguard who wants to go into medicine, and therefore an absolute rock star.
Hello, everyone. I was already introduced, but I would like to say a thank you to my lovely teacher, Ms. Sanders, who I will be sending this video to her later. You were a big part of my high school career. I had you sophomore and senior year, and if it weren't for you, I don't think I would have made it through college applications. So thank you a lot, Ms. Sanders. Thank you for the mayor and the city council for awarding me this award. And thank you to my mom, who always taught me to strive to be whatever I wanted to become. She was an amazing example of what I needed to do for my education. She went back to university at 40 years old, got an MBA, and always made me strive to do better. So thank you, Mom. I love you.
Okay, now we move on to a proclamation of the United States Army 250th birthday. We'll mention that my late father proudly served as a Vietnam-era veteran of the U.S. Army. Thank you. 250 years ago, our nation's leaders established the Continental Army. Today, the Army is the strategic land power of the joint force called upon to prevent, shape, and win against our adversaries. Today is the day we celebrate the total Army Force comprised of multi-component soldiers and the Department of the Army civilians and their contributions to national defense. The American soldier trains, deploys, engages, and destroys enemies of the United States in combat operations as the world's premier land force. Today, as in years past, Army soldiers serve as the cornerstone of the Army profession and continue to add to their legacy of 250 years strong. Please join us now. Well, we're not going to get to that recess here, right? Okay. All right, I do have some certificates to present. I will ask if the following individuals are here. Battalion Chief, Battalion Commander LTC Aaron Fritzler? No? Okay. Command Sergeant Major Marcos Vazquez? No? Long Beach Company Commander/Captain Matthew Jones? Who's here?
Staff Sergeant Durant, Lieutenant Dean Smith.
Okay. Well, you want to come up and introduce them? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to introduce, my name is Mario Gare. I'm the civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army, and I proudly serve on behalf of the Secretary. At this time, I want to call Staff Sergeant Tracy Durant up and Lieutenant Dean Smith. This is really cool for us in Downey, because Sergeant Durant graduated from Downey High School in 2013. She's been serving ever since, and she was the recruiter for these seven young men and women that you're about to see today being sworn in to represent the United States Army. So Sergeant Durant.
Good evening, all. I would like to start off by thanking everyone who came here to support our future soldiers who have decided to serve their country. I know to me, they are my recruits and my future soldiers, but that to the families here, they are sons, daughters, brothers, and sisters. I am proud of each student here before us who has chosen to be a part of something bigger than themselves. I have no doubt that each of my recruits here will go on to do amazing things in the Army. It is truly an honor to be back in my hometown recruiting and giving back to my community. Lastly, thank you to our CASA for the unmatched dedication and essential support to our Army. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Captain Smith, recently promoted, so pretty excited about that. But the past few, before moving here last year, I lived all over the world. I was stationed in Germany, like my man Rudy. Appreciate your service, and thank you to all the other men and women that served prior to us and setting the, you know, being the true trailblazers for this generation. But, you know, living around the world just really made me appreciate America. That's my main point. I think that is our biggest blessing, being born here, having this privilege, and it is a privilege, and I try every day to be the best I can be. We are in difficult times, but like your amazing city council and mayor said, like, all we can do is just stay together. And I'm so excited and proud of all these young men and women that are about to join the Army, because I really do believe in the American dream. I believe anybody here can be whatever they want to be, and I believe the Army is a fantastic avenue to do so. My dad grew up on a farm with a single mom and eight kids, and he had no way out. He joined the Army, ultimately got a college degree, first person in his family to ever do so, and changed his life and my life because of that. So I'm just grateful for the Army. Thank you all for celebrating it today with us, and thank you for all your support.
Thank you both very much. I will present this proclamation to you two. The 250th birthday of the United States Army, whereas on June 14, 1775, the Second Continental Congress representing the citizens of the American colonies authorized the establishment of the Continental Army. And the collective expression of the pursuit of personal freedom that caused the authorization and organization of the United States Army led to the adoption of the Declaration of Independence and the codification of the new nation's basic principles and values in the Constitution. And for the past 250 years, the U.S. Army's central mission has been to fight and win the nation's wars. And the model this will defend is the creed by which the American soldier lives and serves. And no matter what the cause, location, or magnitude of future conflicts, the nation can rely on the U.S. Army to produce well-trained, well-led, highly motivated soldiers to carry out the missions intrude to them. And the components of the U.S. Army to include the Army National Guard, the U.S. Army Reserve, and the regular Army have contributed immensely to health and natural disaster response. Also, members of the City of Downey have proudly served and made the ultimate sacrifice for our nation's freedom while serving in the United States Army and other branches of the nation's military. I, Hector Sosa, Mayor of the City of Downey, do hereby proclaim June 14, 2025, to be the United States Army's 250th birthday, expressing appreciation on behalf of the people of Downey, to the United States Army, and to the dedicated soldiers who have served in it for over 250 years since it's been in existence. I present this proclamation to you.
I want to call Staff Sergeant Tracy Durant up and Lieutenant Dean Smith. This is really cool for us in Downey because Sergeant Durant graduated from Downey High School in 2013. She's been serving ever since, and she was the recruiter for these seven young men and women that you're about to see today being sworn in to represent the United States Army. So Sergeant Durant.
Good evening, all. I would like to start off by thanking everyone who came here to support our future soldiers who have decided to serve their country. I know to me, they are my recruits and my future soldiers, but that to the families here, they are sons, daughters, brothers, and sisters. I am proud of each student here before us who has chosen to be a part of something bigger than themselves. I have no doubt that each of my recruits here will go on to do amazing things in the Army. It is truly an honor to be back in my hometown recruiting and giving back to my community. Lastly, thank you to our CASA for the unmatched dedication and essential support to our Army. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Captain Smith, recently promoted, so pretty excited about that. But the past few, before moving here last year, I lived all over the world. I was stationed in Germany, like my man Rudy. Appreciate your service, and thank you to all the other men and women that served prior to us and setting the, you know, being the true trailblazers for this generation. But, you know, living around the world just really made me appreciate America. That's my main point. I think that is our biggest blessing, being born here, having this privilege. And it is a privilege, and I try every day to be the best I can be. We are in difficult times, but like your amazing city council and mayor said, like, all we can do is just stay together. And I'm so excited and proud of all these young men and women that are about to join the Army because I really do believe in the American dream. I believe anybody here can be whatever they want to be, and I believe the Army is a fantastic avenue to do so. My dad grew up on a farm with a single mom and eight kids, and he had no way out. He joined the Army, ultimately got a college degree, first person in his family to ever do so, and changed his life and my life because of that. So I'm just grateful for the Army. Thank you all for celebrating it today with us, and thank you for all your support.
Thank you both very much. I will present this proclamation to you two. The 250th birthday of the United States Army, whereas on June 14, 1775, the Second Continental Congress representing the citizens of the American colonies authorized the establishment of the Continental Army and the collective expression of the pursuit of personal freedom that caused the authorization and organization of the United States Army led to the adoption of the Declaration of Independence and the codification of the new nation's basic principles and values in the Constitution. And for the past 250 years, the US Army's central mission has been to fight and win the nation's wars. And the model this will defend is the creed by which the American soldier lives and serves. And no matter what the cause, location, or magnitude of future conflicts, the nation can rely on the US Army to produce well-trained, well-led, highly motivated soldiers to carry out the missions, instude to them. And the components of the US Army to include the Army National Guard, the US Army Reserve, and the regular Army have contributed immensely to health and natural disaster response. Also, members of the City of Downey have proudly served and made the ultimate sacrifice for our nation's freedom while serving in the United States Army and other branches of the nation's military. I, Hector Sosa, Mayor of the City of Downey, do hereby proclaim June 14, 2025, to be the United States Army's 250th birthday, expressing appreciation on behalf of the people of Downey, to the United States Army, and to the dedicated soldiers who have served in it for over 250 years since it's been in existence. I present this proclamation to you. So now what we'll do is we'll call up the new recruits. I do want to acknowledge that we do have two Vietnam-era veterans of the US Army. We have Lee. Please stand up. And Now I'd like to call up the new recruits from Downey High School, Alexander Flores. Okay, that's fine. Okay. All right. Okay, so we're going to have these guys sworn in right now, so go ahead.
So tonight, you get to see a couple really cool things. Number one, the proclamation. Thank you to the mayor and to the city council. But number two, you're going to see the swearing in, the oath of office, excuse me, the oath of service for all these young men and women. There's 190 countries in the United Nations. We're the only one that when you raise your right hand, the oath they're about to take, same oath that these soldiers took, and the same oath that I took. It's not to a king or to a queen or to a president. It's to defend and protect this idea called the Constitution. And that's what these young men and women are about to take tonight. After that, we do a ceremony in the United States Army that we do where we cut the cake for our birthday, and it'll be the youngest soldier that'll be sworn in tonight, and it'll be the oldest soldier, which she beat him out by a few months. So, and they'll have the mayor on there, and they'll cut the cake on there. So anyways, if you want to go. Adriana Gutierrez, come on up. I'm sorry. Yes, come on up. Alejandro Rios Fregoso. And from Warren High School, Nathan Carmona. And Alex Ralas? Ralas, okay. So all of you, sorry if you want to stand next to me. Sorry if you want to stand next to me. So it's a great honor to do this as a civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army. It's one of the proudest things I can do. Thank you for your service. Thank you for being from our hometown. Never forget where you're from. And thanks to the mayor under the city council for honoring you. Thank you for being here today, too. So if at this time, if you will raise your right hand, I state your name.
I, Nathan Carmona.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
In allegiance to the same.
In allegiance to the same.
And that I will obey the orders of the President of the United States.
That I will obey the orders of the President of the United States.
And the orders of the officers appointed over me.
And the orders of the officers appointed over me.
According to the regulations of the Uniform Code of Military Justice. I stumbled on that. According to regulations in the Uniform Code.
According to the regulations in the Uniform Code.
Of military justice.
Of military justice.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, soldiers. No, no, sir. With all due respect, you have to shake their hand and give it to them.
Oh, okay.
So yeah. I'm sorry, sir. Just it's a, it's a tradition to do it.
All right, I'll read this once. They all say the same thing. Certificate of recognition signed by myself and my colleagues. In recognition of your courage, selfless dedication, and commitment to serve your country, you embody the traditions of those that stood tall in defense of our freedoms and values. Through your courage, integrity, and sense of duty, you represent the very best of the Downey community, given this 10th day of June 2025, signed by your Downey City Council. And I'll present this to you one by one. Alexander All right, let's give these brave young adults one more round of applause.
Sir, if you'd go with our youngest soldier and our oldest soldier and the council on there, and she'll show you how to do it, I would stand back. So yes, come on, thigh. He's the youngest soldier by a few months, and she's the oldest by about 10 years. No. Do it. Yeah, do it hard. Yeah. That's the new captain's job.
Now we get a picture.
Yeah, let's get a picture. Let's get a picture with all the. We'll take a quick recess for about two, three minutes. If anyone wants to enjoy some cake, we're going to take it outside. Okay, we have one final presentation to the city council, and that is by the LA County Vector Control. Good evening.
Good evening, distinguished council. Mayor, it is an honor to be here. I want to specially thank Mayor Pro Tem, trustee Dorothy Pemberton, for the gracious invitation to speak for you all. And also seeing all these honors and presentations was, I'm going to continue this theme of protection and safeguarding our community. My name is David Palin, and I'm the Communications Manager at Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control. So a little bit about our district. We are one of five. We are the largest of the vector control districts that serve Los Angeles County. We don't just do mosquitoes. We take care of blackfly as well as midge. And this is a cost to taxpayers about $18.97 annually. So the reason why it exists is because there is a mosquito-borne disease threat. It is a growing threat of Dengue fever. Just last year, we had over 140 case, travel-related cases of Dengue fever. This is bone-breaking fever. You do not like this. It attacks the joints. Also, you can have some blood on the gums and nose. There's also the constant threat of West Nile virus that we are always monitoring, as well as the St. Louis encephalomytis that is occasionally detected. So these are the main diseases that are threatening Downey. So what are we doing about it? So we believe in IVM, or Integrated Vector Management, and we take care of that through surveillance, control, and education. Each one of those represents three different departments of the district and how we are dealing with these mosquitoes and the diseases that they carry. Going to go ahead and start off with the control side. So on our operations side, if you see us out in the community, this is usually what you'll see, our technicians doing those routine. you'll see, our technicians doing those routine door-to-door inspections and following up on those service requests. So, on our website, have the ability to call us or submit a service request via the website. This is generally what you'll see, one of our technicians coming to your yard. But, we also have some of these other visibility operations. We have single routes that we will go patrol throughout those public sources. We also have a swimming pool program where we have mosquito fish that we will put in those green pools, and they will eat those mosquito larvae. And last but not least, in this kind of medium visibility are our street gutters. So, they will go and treat those gutters that are pooling with standing water so that they do not become breeding sources. But what you all probably do not see, or rarely see, are our underground storm drain systems where we are popping up in those manholes to, once again, clear out those debris and work with the sanitation and water districts so that we can make sure that they're not breeding mosquitoes, as well as our flood channel, our BNP, where we're, once again, clearing out debris so that we're making way so that they're not pulling up and making standing water for mosquitoes. So, that is our operations department. And here, maybe those in the back may not be able to see it, but we had almost seven thousand activities and inspections that we did in the city of Downey last year. Most of those were residential and public inspections where we're just doing door-to-doors. But as you can see, there's a lot of activity, and this year, we know we have that constant threat of the dengue once again. So, please do not hesitate to ask us to come out and inspect, or even if there's a neighbor that you're suspecting some activity, we'd love to have those conversations. But moving on to our scientific and technical department, they handle the surveillance as well as our trapping, mosquito identification, as well as dead bird testing. So, if you see dead birds, that's usually an indication of West Nile virus. So, if you see that, you can take a picture of it, send it to us, and our scientific technical department will evaluate it. But one of the things we're most excited about our scientific technical department is our sterile insect technique. This is basically mosquito-on-mosquito warfare, where we have our male mosquitoes that do not bite, and if you didn't know, is the female mosquito that bites. What we do is we X-ray radiate, fun fact, nature, kind of crazy, but we X-ray radiate those male mosquitoes. We do not genetically modify them. I'm going to say that again, no GMOs, we X-ray them, and we release those male mosquitoes to mate with those female mosquitoes so that there are no viable offspring afterwards. This is really important and exciting for us because, one, it's environmentally friendly; two, it's non-chemical, so we do not have to rely on pesticides in building up resistance in the mosquitoes. It results in no offspring, and last but not least, it reduces the pest population. So, we're very excited about this. We've piloted it in Summerton Hanga, and we are right now seeking for more support so that we can expand this district-wide. But there is another department here. It is our communications department, department that I lead, and we have basically four prongs of our department. One is community outreach. So, I was happy to hear about some of those activities in the park. We'll be following up and making sure that there's a booth there. We have an education program that, right now, goes to our elementary schools, and we are building it up from middle school as well as high school. And then, we are doing City Council presentations like I'm doing right now. And last but not least, we are on all social media channels. We do literature drop-offs. We try to meet our residents wherever they are. So, whether it's digital or in person, we want to be there. So, we do have a couple of asks, and normally, this is asking for your support, but here, I just want to say thank you for the support. Once again, Mayor Pemberton has done a PSA with us, and you all have collaborated with us on social media before. We're just asking that you continue to do that. Our summer campaign is launching this week, so our social media toolkit will be available. But we also just encourage you to tell residents to please utilize our services because, like I said, we can handle those public areas as well as have conversations with neighbors. And then, if there is availability on your website or any of your marquee's digital billboards, we would happy to amplify our message utilizing those spaces. So, with that, I will open it up to questions, and I thank you once again for your time.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here. I know Dorothy, she's served on the Vector Control Board. I've never seen someone so excited to talk about mosquitoes, but thank you for being here, very informative.
Thank you. I think that the SIT program, as I've learned, and we're all learning different things, the female, the male, that you really are bringing technology to the forefront in trying to do that. You know, we have a lot of stray animals or what we do, but never heard that with mosquitoes, we're doing that as well to eradicate them. They do serve a purpose, but when they're on our ankles and such, they don't serve that purpose. And I think one year, we had rain in the summer in August. You know, we had an extreme harsh summer with the mosquitoes, but again, keeping everything, turning over pots and water, not excessive, and we know where to call you if we need a little help, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, there's one public hearing item this evening, one, adoption of a resolution authorizing a fee schedule associated with the administration of Chapter Seven of the Article Eight of the Downey Municipal Code, vacant and abandoned property maintenance, security, registration, and monitoring requirements, regulating the maintenance and security of vacant properties within the city of Downey. Adopt Resolution Number Twenty-Five-Dash-Eight-Three-Zero-One, establishing fee schedule associated with the implementation of Chapter Seven, vacant and abandoned property maintenance, security, registration, and monitoring requirements, regulating the maintenance and security of vacant properties within the city of Downey. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. Time is now eight oh one. City Clerk Duarte, do you have proof of publication?
Aye, to mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion second received and filed publication?
Sir, move.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved with council member or this absent.
Thank you. City Manager Bradley, is there a staff report?
Yes, mayor. We'll have Community Development Director Weitron introduce the item.
Yes, thank you for the introduction. Tonight's item is a follow-up public hearing item to an ordinance that the City Council previously approved in June and becomes effective on August ninth. It relates to establishing a fee schedule associated with the implementation of the program. And with that, I'll introduce our planning consultant Laurel Reimer, who will have a short PowerPoint presentation outlining the proposed fees for your consideration. Thank you.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
So, just a couple weeks ago, the City Council adopted ordinance number Twenty-Five-Dash-Fifteen-Twenty-Seven, which regulates the maintenance, security, and monitoring of vacant, distressed, and abandoned properties. The ordinance applies to two property types. First is vacant properties, which is defined as property that is either undeveloped, vacant, showing signs of vacancy, or it might be occupied by unauthorized individuals. And second, it's distressed and abandoned properties. And this is property that is facing foreclosure or a home that is somewhere in the foreclosure process. So, the ordinance that was adopted applies to these two property types, and it will become effective on June twenty-seventh of this year. The ordinance requires the registration, monitoring, security, and maintenance of vacant, distressed, and abandoned properties. The property maintenance is just kind of a reminder from a couple weeks ago, the property maintenance and security standards are meant to maintain the properties in a safe, neat, clean, and sanitary condition. The code, the new ordinance, requires that properties be registered, and once a property is registered, the city will go out to the property and conduct an inspection, and then they will categorize the property based on the conditions of the property. So, a property that is categorized as stable is in good condition, it shows no signs of vacancy, it's well-maintained. The property owners are responsive to city requests, and the property is regularly monitored. The second property category is at-risk property. These properties show minimal signs of vacancy, so maybe they have overgrown grass, things like that. There's no unauthorized persons occupying the site. They do respond to city requests, however, they may not monitor the property as regularly as they should. And then, the third category is hazardous property. These are properties that are not maintained. They show visible signs of vacancy, so they may have broken windows, graffiti, trash strewn about, things like that, or they have evidence of an unauthorized occupancy. The owners of hazardous properties are not responsive to city requests, and they are not regularly monitored. So, as part of that ordinance, a fee is included. It authorized a vacant property registration and monitoring fee, and that's to recoup the costs associated with implementing the vacant and abandoned property ordinance. Staff estimates that it will take approximately three hours to intake the registration, review the registration, conduct the inspection, and then categorize the property. So, using a staff bill rate of one hundred and thirty-five dollars per hour, the registration fee is proposed at four hundred and five dollars. For most properties, this will be a one-time fee. However, the registration fee could apply if a property changes ownership, that new owner would have to reapply, or if the property is re-categorized to at-risk or hazardous. The monitoring fee is an ongoing fee that is charged, and it is based on the category of that property. The city will conduct regular inspections of these properties, so that's why this is an ongoing fee. The frequency of the inspection depends on which category the property is within. Stable properties will be inspected quarterly, and that's an estimate of four staff hours needed per year to conduct those quarterly inspections. And then, the fee for a stable property would be collected once a year. For an at-risk property, they will be inspected monthly, which is estimated at twelve staff hours per year, and that fee will be collected on a quarterly basis. And then, finally, hazardous properties will be inspected on a weekly basis for an estimate of fifty-two staff hours per year, and that will be conducted monthly. So, in total, the fee for a stable property would be five hundred and forty dollars annually; a at-risk property would be sixteen hundred and twenty dollars annually; and a hazardous property would be seven thousand and twenty dollars annually. It's important to note that the fees proposed, they're anticipated for full cost recovery of all staff hours needed for this to implement the ordinance. And if adopted, the fee would go into effect on August ninth of this year, so just following the ordinance itself going into effect. Staff did review the ordinance for compliance with California Environmental Quality Act and determined that it is covered by SEQA Guideline Section Fifteen Zero Six Zero C Two, which exempts properties that do not result in a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment. In this case, it's an ordinance to adopt a fee, so there will be no physical change to the environment. The fee ordinance was publicly noticed on May twenty-second of this year in the Downey Patriot, as required by California law and the Downey Municipal Code, Section Five One Two, and no correspondence was received. Therefore, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution Number Twenty-Five-Dash-Eight-Three-Zero-One to establish a fee schedule associated with the implementation of Chapter Seven, vacant and abandoned property maintenance, security, registration, and monitoring requirements, regulating the maintenance and security of vacant properties within the city of Downey. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Do any members of the City Council have any questions or comments?
No questions. Just thank you for the presentation.
I think this, I have a number of residents, I'm sure all of us do, that keep questioning abandoned homes in their neighborhoods, you know, what it does to surrounding neighborhoods. They see somebody go in, they call the police. So, I'm glad to see this, so that the owners can take a proactive approach and keep the neighborhood safe from unwanted people that are in there. If somebody then is becoming delinquent, is there a certain timeframe? Would it be put on a property tax bill? If it's unpaid, say they were in a hazardous monitoring fee of seven thousand in a year, what is the process for then assessing that or trying to collect that?
If it is not paid. So, because it is a city, if it ends up going, I'm not sure, because it would be an adopted city fee, that would be...
Yes, thank you, Laurel. The question is, how would the city collect any past due fees? We currently have procedures through our finance department. The code enforcement division would work with our finance department to collect on any past due fees. Likely if that is happening, we also have a code enforcement case that has outstanding administrative citation fees, so we would pursue collections of any fees related to citations or past due inspections through our regular finance department-driven protocols for collections.
Is there a certain period of time where it is considered past due? Is it a sixty, a ninety? It just depends on the case?
It depends on the case for administrative citations. Once they're past due, their administrative citation, then it goes, and they've passed their appeal hearing, then they're technically past due. And through our finance department, we would work with them to ensure that our collections either aligns or follows its timeline.
Okay, yeah, there's a good system in place already.
Yes, there is already.
Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Okay. Thank you. I will now open this item up for public comment. City Clerk Duarte, do we receive any written correspondence to be incorporated into the record?
We did not, mayor.
Members of the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing item only, it may come up when your number is called. I will be calling you all on number cards. For this item, I remind speakers you have three minutes to address the council, and your comments must be regarding this public hearing item only. City Clerk Duarte, how many speakers have taken a number?
We have one speaker, mayor.
Speaker number one, please come forward.
Let me veer off for a second. It's a little disappointing, didn't allow for the accommodation for me to sit up in a chair in the lobby there. I mean, I've got this knee replacement, and it was kind of nice to sit in the chair and stretch it out before I walked in on the carpet, but since you wanted to take that away, I just wanted to voice my disappointment in that. This issue, the vacant properties, again, you haven't addressed the concept or the actual fact of chemtrails flying over vacant properties or occupied properties. Who is flying the planes? Who's responsible? What are they dropping on these properties? How does it affect the vegetation on these properties, vacant or occupied? You haven't addressed any of that. How does it affect our health? What are we breathing into our lungs on vacant properties or occupied properties or abandoned properties? You haven't addressed any of that. You talked about the security, registration, and the maintenance, security. Vacant properties in cities is a real interesting subject because it's full of corruption, full of corruption. Over in Compton, illegally selling property, that's one thing you haven't addressed here, is how is the city going to sell vacant property that they own? You going to sell it at market value, or like in Downey, we sell properties below market value to our friends? That's what they've had a problem in Compton. Yes, they're in trouble for that. And the Community Development Director in Bell moves over to Bell Gardens now because he was involved in this corrupt sale of real estate. Now, we do the same things here. Now, we do the same things here. We sell properties to our friends and below market value, and then they change it into a pizza place or something, and I don't know anybody of that ethnicity knows how to make any pizzas or not, but that's the corruption that goes on in every city, not just Downey. But you haven't addressed that. You haven't addressed how the city is going to sell vacant properties. To whom? How much? What's the percentage? Is it market value? Is it below market value? These are sweetheart real estate deals, especially when you can be found, board members of the DDIA that find these sweetheart deals for your friends, and it needs to stop. Thanks.
I will now entertain a motion and second to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Time is now 8:15. Order by the mayor, unless there are any comments from the council, I will entertain a motion and second.
Make a motion to adopt.
The resolution.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved with council member or these absent.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment regarding agenda, consent calendar, and non-agenda items.
A public comment on agenda, consent calendar, and non-agenda items. If you did not receive a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room to be issued a number card by city staff. We will be calling blue number cards for the public comment period. Before we begin the public comment period, we would like to remind members of the audience that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Members of the audience and speakers who violate these rules and cause a disruption will receive one warning and then may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the municipal code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. The city council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction and invites the public to do so during the city council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the need of the city council to conduct the public business in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. We expect that everyone who participates in today's meeting, from the members of the council here on the dais, to staff, to the members of the public in attendance, do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity, name-calling, or behaving in a way that disrupts this meeting. This includes yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disrupts or disturbs the meeting. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons who are addressing the city council. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking. Any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. And attacks of a personal nature on city staff or city council members that have no connection to agenda items or non-agenda items. We remind speakers that your comments must be addressed to the mayor and not to any other council member, city staff, or the audience.
City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comment to be incorporated into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we have one written public comment.
Is there a motion and second received and filed written public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved with council member or these absent.
Thank you. City Clerk Duarte, how many speakers have taken a number?
We have three speakers, Mayor.
Thank you. Based on the number of speakers, each speaker will have three minutes to address the city council. I remind all speakers that you must remain seated until your number is called. Speaker number one, please come forward. Good evening.
Tonight, I'd like to share with you some statements made by Mother Teresa about the gift of life. We are here to be witnesses of love and to celebrate life because life has been created in the image of God. Life is to love and to be loved. That is why we all have to take a strong stand so that no child, boy or girl, will be rejected or unloved. Every child is a sign of God's love that has to be extended over all the earth. Each one of us is here today because we have been loved by God, who created us, and our parents, who accepted and cared enough to give us life. Life is the most beautiful gift of God. That is why it is so painful to see what is happening today in so many places around the world, life being deliberately destroyed by war, by violence, by abortion. A great poverty reigns in a country that allows taking the life of an unborn child, a child created in God's image, created to live and to love. His or her life is not for destroying, but for living, despite the selfishness of those who fear that they lack the means to feed or educate one more child. This website, lozierinstitute.org, has scientific information about pregnancy and abortion. Their video Voyage of Life is excellent to show to children. The website, once again, is lozierinstitute.org.
Thank you. Speaker number two, please come forward.
Please, square Vietnam veteran, US Army, American Legion, forgotten country, mayor and city council. First, happy 250th birthday to the US Army. This includes active duty, the reserves, and the National Guard. As to the LA riots is what they are, as to rioters burning and looting. The LAPD chief to the public, we are being overwhelmed, unlike the opposite political gerrymandering and political engagement by the mayor and our governor. Army, National Guard, and the Marines, they enforce and secure our federal laws. I agree with Mario Trujillo as to we need to comply and enforce our federal laws. I experienced about over a month ago, which was either DHS or ICE, about a month ago, McDonald's parking lot at Florence Avenue in Lakewood. There were three unmarked cars, and when they came out to point their weapons at a sedan, I noticed around the corner was a Downey PD officer. I walked over and I said, "What just happened?" He goes, "Lee, those, they were masked, those were DHS or ICE." So they've been in here far longer than a month, just to let you know. Also, again, I found it extremely puzzling and very insulting to watch our American flag being burned, and also by the, what I would consider yellow journalism by our media. My generation, we will not fall for that kind of propaganda. Finally, may God bless America and Israel. May God bless the military and its veterans, and may God bless local police and law enforcement and their families. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Speaker number three, please come forward.
Now Speaker four, batting cleanup.
Thank you.
All right, as a previous speaker pointed out, a lot of gaslighting from politicians. That's why we can't trust any of you. We get a lot of gaslighting in here, tons of it, tons of it. You're not trustworthy. That's the problem. Mayor, we listened to District 5 over here talk about rule of law. He's standing up for our police. Anybody strikes our police officers, they will be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. Well, we know that's gaslighting. I mean, he's had plenty of opportunity when he was deputy district attorney, working for George Gascon, who's made this a criminal's paradise, and now his people are out on the streets, ignoring the rule of law, setting cars on fire. I mean, it's pretty obvious, and then they get up there and tell us, nothing is happening. There are no riots, there are no cars on fire. None of that is real. There is no looting. Mayor Karen Bass says there's no looting going on. It's just a handful of people. Now, you've taken photo ops with her, I don't know how you feel about it now, but it's just gaslighting to the hilt, and we can't take it seriously at all, even when we have council members tell us that Downey is a desired city to live in. Well, no, under your watch, and everybody's current watch, it has gone down the drain. There is no public safety going on out there, and it's not our police's fault. We have passed Measure S, Measure D, and even Measure A in the county, and we do not have one more officer, boots on the ground, added to our force. And what do we have out here? We still have 124 officers, so don't tell me about public safety. You got meth head tweakers running around everywhere. They're all over the place, everywhere. We have street vendors everywhere, every, one of them even rides around the neighborhood in a golf cart. And the problem is, Chamber of Commerce people, relatives, go out and patronize them. I thought we were supporting our brick and mortar businesses. Apparently not. We're not business friendly. The other ones over here, right across the street from PIH Hospital, every day. No big deal, I guess. The roads are not paved. Now we're starting to do south of Firestone on Downey Avenue. Finally, there's no left turn signal at Vista Del Rosa on Lakewood. Lakewood Boulevard's a mess. But the good news is, is Andrew Doe, five years prison sentence for a county supervisor of Orange County for taking bribes and laundering the money through his daughter's nonprofit in Orange County. That's the good.
Now is the time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members?
I move to close public comment, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So ordered by the mayor. Now, thank you, Councilmember Fermetta. Now is the time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
A second.
Please vote.
The consent calendar is approved with council member or these absent.
Thank you. There are no administrative reports this evening. The city council meeting is now adjourned in the memory of Police Officer Samuel Rivera, 35, nine-year veteran of the Baldwin Park Police Department, who was fatally shot while responding to a shots fired call. Darius Wong, 43, a civilian, who was also fatally shot at the scene, and Police Officer Gabriel Fazio, 46, four-year veteran of the Apache Junction Police Department, who succumbed to his injuries after being struck by gunfire during a road rage traffic stop. Move into silence, please. The time is now 8:28. This meeting is adjourned.